Everybody ready? Is everyone ready? I'm off to you. Is everyone here?
I hear you.
Think it's no one else does. Let's call this meeting to order. This meeting is properly advertised and posted in accordance with Public Law seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, and has been advertised in Lang City Press and posted in the City Hall and its website. Please rise for the vice lute. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please keep all of our service members that are working hard to protect our country. Please keep our member of the city council Julie Sparks in our prayers as well. And for all of our doctors and nurses who are taking care of all the patients related to COVID and administering these shots, which is a very taxing job for them. I'll take this. Green Joe, sorry. Nevermind. Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Dilch?
Here.
Mr. Olson? Mr. Olson?
Here.
Sella?
Here.
And Ms. Sparks is absent tonight, and Mayor Benesia?
Present.
Mr. Lafferty, there are some people in the waiting room waiting to get in.
Everybody has been admitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I make a motion to open a meeting to the public. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is now open to the public. Anyone from the public? Mr. Poe?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just some hopefully quick questions. Uh, the county put off their, um, budget because of the uncertainty on the federal funds. I didn't know if that was what, uh, was happening, but it was next thing on the agenda. Uh, and I guess there's different things regarding leap and the truck and everything else, and I guess we'll see what that, uh, becomes. The green acres wanting to purchase private properties, do we know? So I think it will be revealed on what area of the city that's in? Or do we know?
We have some information from them, that's about it. I'll be sponto when we get to that.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, consolidation of court, I guess I've just gone ahead with the county municipal court initiative, or is that something else?
That would be correct.
Okay. Uh, and then city clerk advertising, um, I guess that's another round on seeing what can be done. I did want to take a moment, uh, as the society lays on, uh, the city council, um, to anyone who didn't happen to see it, it is on, uh, some of the, some of the Facebook pages that report for the city, and I can send, uh, a copy of the graffiti that was done at the, uh, historic, historic society sign, uh, but to express the appreciation to Sarah Sharp and the Garrick family, um, for their, uh, rapid, uh, volunteer action and, uh, high degree of, uh, competence and, uh, care to get rid of the graffiti. Um, but one of the things that was lifted up from the police is that it is then helpful if they have, uh, a camera in order to, uh, see that.
Mr. Poe, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is public comment on items on the agenda.
I unders- I'm sorry, Mr. Lafferty, I was just trying to, we have those bonds in this community that are, uh, wind up getting kind of frayed and appreciating the good stuff when it happens is, uh, perhaps, uh, not too often it occurs.
Do you have anything else pertaining to the agenda right now?
I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, Joe, to try to lift up good things. Nope, I'm done, thank you.
Point for the Garrick. Garrick, thank you very much.
I apologize for interrupting you, Creed.
That's all right, Randy, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public? Mr. Gosin?
Mr. Gosin?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, uh, just follow up on a continuing concern with the zoning office a- a- and particularly follow up with you, Mayor. I had sent out an email, uh, that had gotten out to city council members, but I noted that you don't have a city council email address. And I just wanted to make sure that you had gotten copies of that email.
I saw it. I spoke to Wayne about it, he's on it, and as you probably are aware, Larry, there's no member of city council that can tell the, uh, zoning officer to write summons or anything. I just directed him to look into the matter and tell us what you think.
I, I was only asking if you were aware of the matter, that, uh, but tha- but thank you, and, and, and yeah, I've, I've had conversations. I, I would imagine that there will be...
Larry, you got muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, did I do that? Did I, did I, would I expect that there would be some other comment about it from the zoning officer to bring us up to date as to his activities since we last spoke? Hello? Nobody's going to answer me. Thank you for your time.
As, Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Hello, am, am I still?
No, you're, you're not muted, Mr. Gosin, the mayor is muted, he needs to unmute.
I see. Well, a- a- as it relates to this entire zoning issue, eh, I need to dovetail into our zoning ordinance, which we are looking at a second reading tonight. As I perceive what's happening on Sixth Avenue right now, this is a continuing and possibly the greatest threat that we've had to our zoning ordinance. And a- are we going to have another opportunity to speak to the zoning ordinance tonight specifically, or is this our only time?
No, there will be a public hearing along the zoning ordinance.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight? Okay. Well, as we go into that, I just want to give consideration to w- w- what's happening on Sixth Avenue and the threat to our paper streets in town, and, uh, wha- wha- what's happening there, and I think it can have a tremendous impact on our way of life here. So, heads up. Back to you, Mayor.
Larry, were you able, Larry, were you able to hear me speaking before, because I...
Hello?
Something's here with this, uh, uh...
Hello?
iPad is jumping from mute to unmute. I don't know why, I still know what it is.
Mayor, he could not, he could not hear you.
Okay, so what I said to you before, Larry, was, um, I spoke to Wayne, absent of a report, I don't have a zoning officer's report from him, so absent of a report, I do not know what specifically he has done. He is aware, he is looking into it, and I don't know if it's in his report this month or not, I'm certainly not going to look at his report now.
No, I'm just telling you that I couldn't watch the report.
Okay, so, we're, we're on it, Wayne's gonna take, you know, Wayne's probably one of the best zoning officers I know, uh, certainly the best that the city's ever had, that's...
We're going to proceed on it, on it. Thank you, I appreciate your, your being on top of that, Mayor. A- as it relates to a specific concern, but my concern is broader, i- 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 it is this zoning ordinance that we're going to look at tonight, and if we're going to pass a zoning ordinance tonight, a code, a code, a code that covers all of our zoning as well, am I to understand that the zoning officer isn't here to speak to issues that might arise?
What I will tell you this, Larry, what I will tell you this, anytime we have new issues that, uh, that pop up, the city always, always has the ability to amend or to insert yet another ordinance. Just because we have something that's an official book that's about to be adopted tonight, does not mean that that's where it ends. There's always the ability to amend if we see it. Simple as that. So, we have something, we have a template to move forward on, and if we feel that, you know, something, uh, is just not working out, or something brand new comes up like what you're saying, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time I've ever heard of this situation happen. So...
What's going to happen again and again and again, once this happens? It's hap- Joe, it's happened in our town already. We've had, we've had challenges to our zoning ordinances, we've had people that have built on unimproved roads and have gotten away with it. This might be the most egregious that we've ever seen, and this is an outsider coming in. The other times, it's been kind of inside and under the radar, but we all know what I'm talking about. But the bottom line here is, is that this is bigger, this is, this is a huge, huge threat. We have paper streets all over town, and we better be sure of what we're doing with this zoning ordinance right now. Second Avenue, down past Mr. Deviasy, where he built the road, there's private property down there, there might be cows and bulls one day as his neighbor. Honest John Road, Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, both sides, Third Avenue, both sides of Tuckahoe Road, fifth, I mean, all over town. We have land all over town that would be under threat to this kind of activity, and we better be sure, because it'll change our way of life here.
We get it.
Thank you for that, Mayor.
We're on. Is there anyone else in the public?
I don't see anyone else, let me see.
I make a motion to close the public. I make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I, uh, received late notice last night from Judd, and I have, uh, somebody that I would like to bring on at this, at this time. Um, an old friend of mine, Tim Kreischer, he used to be the former mayor of, uh, Vetner. He is taking the replacement of Frank Formica. Tim has additional information for us with regards to a, uh, leap grant that we, I thought that we were really moving forward with, we've already did a resolution on it, but Tim does have additional information that he would like to share with us, and, um, Tim, I'm going to open the floor up to you.
Mr. Mayor, I thought the budget was next.
All right, Tim's going to be brief, and then he'll be out. I don't want to tie him up all night, he has other things he has to take care of. Thank you. Tim, can you hear me?
Hear me, Mayor.
Tim, can you, you're, you're not clear. Tim?
He's frozen, Mayor.
How do you unfreeze him?
I'm sorry? M- Mr. Kreischer, you're frozen. That's his video connection.
Is that what it is? Tim, if you can hear us, your camera's frozen, and we cannot hear you. So, while he figures it out that he doesn't have his, uh, video going, we're going to go to the next one, which is, uh, Sure Animal. I'd like to get that out of the way rather than holding her up all night. So, with that being said, welcome. You're on mute. You're still muted.
Got it. Good evening. Good evening. Yes, I, I understand you want to, you have a few questions about a cat ordinance?
Well, I got it listed very deep in the agenda tonight, under a, uh, animal hoarding ordinance, but, um, you and I have had conversations in the past, and we are aware of a certain situation in town that seems to be actually a, uh, in my opinion, a serious situation, that's actually a public health matter, and, I mean, nothing being against cats or cat lovers, but when you start, I, I'm going to, Linda, I'm going to give you the presentation, so you, you need to tell us what you were hoping that we would be able to do, so that we're there, when we do call the state police, they have an enforcement mechanism that they can, uh, uh, work on, because right now, the way it stands, we have nothing.
That's true. Um, in most towns that we cover, there is a very simple ordinance, which is a, a one paragraph, and it basically says if you feed cats, that they must be vaccinated and spayed and neutered. So, it prevents people from hoarding. We've used this ordinance successfully, the code enforcement, as well as animal control, can enforce, uh, this ordinance. So, it's not just, uh, us. The state police are not involved unless it involves neglect or cruelty. So, as of right now, if someone decides they want to feed fifty cats and let them multiply, you have no ordinance to allow us to go in and, and, and rectify the situation. So, if they continue to feed when we're trying to trap, you can't trap the cats. Fortunately, in, in a still manner, you do have quite a few people that, uh, that are cat friendly and have tried to help out in the situation, and the situation you're referring to on Fifth Avenue has, has improved greatly because they have been allowing trapping, but, uh, the ordinance will prevent a hoarder from continuing to not cooperate.
And what about, uh, people who have dogs, like excess amount of dogs in their house, like real excess?
Well, that, that...
Any state guidelines for that?
Uh, there, there, that would fall under the state police, under hoarding or neglect, but only if, if it's truly neglect, like in Buena Vista, there's one house that has, uh, um, six, six to ten dogs in it, but it, they have an ordinance that allows only six dogs per resident, so it depends on what you have. So, a limit of dogs, I think, is a good idea, because otherwise, you have breeders with maybe ten to fifteen animals in the house at one time. But then, that's a more complicated ordinance, that, that would, can, i- 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 they would be required to have a kennel license in that case, which is very difficult to get in the state of New Jersey.
And there is one particular situation that I am aware of, um, where someone has eighteen dogs in the house, and it's literally, it's disturbing the peace of the neighborhood.
Uh, yeah.
They just bark all day long.
We've, we haven't had any complaints about that house, you'll have to, uh, let us know where that is. I, I hope they're all licensed.
I believe that they are, but still, I mean, it's just, it's, it's out of control.
Yeah, most towns do have a limit on the number of dogs you can have per acre. Here in upper township where I live, there is no limit, but people have much larger properties. Um, Buena Vista, Buena Vista has a limit, most towns do have a limit.
I will, uh, talk to you about that in the very immediate future, as to how we proceed with that one.
Okay.
So, is it your recommendation that, uh, our city should in fact adopt the, uh, an ordinance, since you provided a sample, uh, template ordinance? Should we adopt that? Would it be beneficial for enforcement, for what you've been doing?
Yeah, absolutely. If it's the ordinance that we proposed, that's the simple ordinance, uh, that, that makes it very simple, that the people, if you feed a cat, if you feed cats after seven days, they're considered your animals, and you must vaccinate them and spay and neuter them so they don't multiply and become a problem in the neighborhood.
So, if you don't mind, Linda, would you be able to, um, uh, email that over to the city clerk's office and to my, uh, my email address as well?
I, I will.
Because unfortunately, we live in an email world where you can receive up to fifty emails a day. It's just mind-boggling. It's like you could be a slave to your phone all day long, just erasing them, we're saving them.
Yep, I'll, I'll e- I'll email it to you.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Now, what does that ordinance allow you guys to do, sure animal control?
If, uh, someone is feeding cats and they can't prove that they've been vaccinated and spayed and neutered, we issue a, a warning first, seven days, and then, then a summons can be issued after that. And we, we have actually several people in court right now, and it's amazing, before COVID, it was much more successful, because now with COVID, the courts have no consequences, there are no, uh, warrants being put out, um, but it was extremely successful before COVID. It's still, uh, a success, because people still have to appear in court, but there are no consequences, but once COVID is over, they have to appear in court, and they have to prove that the, uh, animals have been spayed and vaccinated. It's also a public safety issue, because you want every cat out there, uh, vaccinated for rabies, and you don't want cats running around without a vac- proof of vaccination, because it's a rare instance, but some cats have, have been, uh, in New Jersey, have carried rabies.
Is that also the same sample ordinance that you sent over requiring that cats have a collar on?
Uh, we, we, we want that removed. We want that removed, because that, that was part of an ordinance that was enacted before we took over in lower township, they were the first ones to enact that, because as you know, cats can get stuck on collars. So, I did speak to, um, uh, the clerk about removing that and amending it, so it's safe for, for the cats.
And just food for thought, Linda, I saw from a, a, a report from a previous, uh, animal control officer, and I guess you're probably aware, but two cats, totally unchecked, in a ten-year period, will produce one million cats. Did you ever see that report?
Yeah, I've, I've seen that. Um, sadly, a lot of feral cats, their lifespan is very short because of being hit by cars or coyotes, and, uh, um, so I, I think that is probably exaggerated, although they can multiply immensely, but every, uh, week, we have numerous cats hit by cars, and usually they're feral cats, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay.
Linda, do you have, uh, alternative policy examples, or is that the only policy example that you have?
That's the only one that we feel, uh, is, is effective, the others are very complicated. I think you've seen several of them that, that are quite extensive. This is just a, a simple ordinance, just to allow us to, uh, have the hoarder situ- or the hoarder, or the person that's feeding the cats, uh, work with us, so that they don't sabotage the trapping efforts, and, and there's some funding out there. You have some wonderful volunteers in a still manner who have done a great job with, uh, trying to help, uh, spay and neuter the cats, one of them, I believe, is in the meeting right now, and, uh...
I know some of them, and I, I, I think that, I fear that, that seven-day time limit may compel some of them to, to turn away from the effort, which just puts the cats out there digging through our trash and making more cats and that kind of stuff.
Eh, yeah, we work with the, usually they don't, we work with the people. We have, um, several people that volunteer and the funding available to help them, there's even free food. The idea is to, uh, uh, work with, so they don't stop feeding. That's the whole idea, yeah. We, we definitely are on the side of the cats, but we don't want them to create a nuisance, and one, once cats are spayed or neutered, they tend to not be the nuisance. That's the difference. I have ten, I am a feeder myself, I have ten to twelve feral cats on my property right now, they never leave my driveway, they sit there and wait for me to feed them twice a day. They never leave, my neighbors are, are quite happy, they're, they're all healthy, vaccinated, so I am, of the situation, I took them from the shelter. I, I am a, I have proof that, uh, spaying and neutering works to prevent the problem. So, if people want to continue to feed, it has to be done in a responsible way, and they become your care, not the, when, when, when a cat is injured or hit by a car, and it's your cat, you are responsible for the cost, not the municipality.
What, what stops, if we have a, if we have an ordinance for and file for that, what stops, let's just say, you stopping at my house and saying, you know, whose cats are these, and I say, oh, they're not mine, but they're my neighbors, or something like that, what stops that from happening?
Uh, oh, are you saying that you're, you're blaming your neighbor for feeding, or you're not taking responsibility, or?
No, I'm saying if you came to my house, and I had cats outside, and I say, oh, that one's mine and that one's mine, and I have the shot records and stuff to prove it, but the other two that are here are not mine, but how do you know that they're not a surrounding person's cat? You would take those cats, then?
It depends on the situation. When you're feeding outside cats, I have a visitor cat once in a while, but I, it just depends on the situation. When you feed outside cats, you will be feeding not only your cats, but wildlife as well, so we advise all residents to take the food away after thirty minutes. You know, I know when I'm feeding, after thirty minutes, the food, I take it away. I actually have a, 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 a feeding station for, for raccoons about, uh, a five hundred feet away, because I don't want the raccoons coming anywhere near my cats, and they will smell the food, so I myself have a decoy feeding station for the raccoons, but I have enough property to be able to do that, I have several acres. Thank you.
You gave some interesting, uh, points there, so I appreciate you taking the time to, uh, make your presentation, thank you, Linda.
My pleasure, anytime. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Kreischer, can you hear me? Tim, Tim Kreischer, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I hear you. I'm going to introduce you, Tim, for some reason, you're, you're, uh, you escaped the, uh, screen here, you're back, but, um, I'd like to introduce council. Tim Kreischer is an old friend of mine from years back, when he was mayor of the city of Vetner, uh, one of the hardest fighting mayors that I knew of back in the day, and, uh, I believe he still fights for his community, he's always got a good cause, and now he's the new per, uh, person heading the shared service for the county, he has taken the place of Frank Formica. I brought this on tonight because I got to speak with Tim right around eight o'clock last night, and didn't really have a whole lot of time for much of anything, but nonetheless, Tim, I, we, we talked about several things, you're going to come back, you wrote it all down, uh, the list of, uh, concerns and questions that I had that you're going to present to the council. So, I guess you have the county contracts, and how much they're going to pay by the hour, per man, per vehicle, I'll, I'll let you take the ball and start running with it. You're muted, Tim, you're muted.
Yes, I am, it went back to mute. How about now?
You're good. Well, you're good. We can't see, but we can hear.
Can't see, well, it's better, it's better that I'm not seen. Uh, thanks, Mayor, for your kind words, and as, as the mayor said, I've been, uh, replacing Frank. Uh, I found some notes from him, it said he was working with a still manner, uh, on by the, a dump truck with a snow plow and salt spreader, so that they could enter a shared service agreement with Atlantic County to do your own, uh, the twenty-two miles of county road in a still manner. And so the mayor a- asked me some questions, I told him I would try to get as many answers as I, I could today, um, and he also asked me to just share my experiences with the shared service agreement, uh, that Vetner had with the county for snow removal. Again, we only had about three point five miles of road in Vetner, that was county road, but they were very important roads. Uh, Wellington Avenue was the main road, uh, leading off the island to the, uh, mainland. Dorset Avenue was the main road leading Vetner Heights, and Vetner Avenue was a main road going through, uh, the center of the city. So, my, my perspective was, I, I, and I'll explain the financial end of it in a minute, but my biggest concern was public safety, that ambulance or fire had to traverse these roads to go to many calls, and, look, the county does a great job, but they have three hundred seventy-five miles of road, as I'm sure you're aware, they just can't snap their fingers and the snow goes away, and I wanted to be in control of that situation, particularly when it dealt with public safety. So, we entered this shared service agreement that we would pave those, or not pave, I'm sorry, um, plow those roads to ensure that they were done in a timely fashion, and, you know, to quote Tip O'Neill, and use another cliche, the mud flows downhill, I'm sure you've experienced this as elected officials, it's always your fault, they don't want to hear that it's county road, and they're supposed to pave, uh, plow it, you know, they blame you, so, I, I didn't want to do, hear that, to be honest with you, but it was more of a public safety concern, that we did, and it worked well for us, it may not work for you, but, you know, I, it worked well for us. Uh, the shared service agreement that we signed, the way it works with the county, the standard agreement is that they will reimburse you for the manpower, uh, to pave the, I keep saying pave, got my P's confused, to plow those roads, uh, they will reimburse you for that, you know, based on, uh, actual payroll records. They also will pay you based on the number of hours that you... They also will pay you, based on the number of hours that you need to pay to plow those roads, they will pay you for the use of the truck, and the rate that they use is the FEMA rate, so depending on what size truck you buy, uh, and the capacity is how much, it looked like what I could find, the mayor, you could, uh, confirm this, was laying worth some forty-five to a hundred dollars. So, if you got a, a, a good-sized truck, you need to be concerned that-